I'd like to call to order the September 26th meeting of the Shelby Township Planning Commission. Madam Secretary, would you call the roll?
Mr. Dallo?
Here.
Mr. DeCicco?
Here.
Ms. Cassali, absent. Mr. Bernardi?
Yeah.
Mr. Turner?
Here.
Mr. Appone?
Here.
Mr. Wozniak?
Here.
Chairman Moffett, we have a quorum.
Great. First item is approved of the agenda.
So move.
Support.
It's been moved and supported. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. First item is approval of the minutes from the September 12th meeting.
So move.
Support.
Moved and supported. Any questions or comments? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Good evening. We have two site plans. The first being Chris Humphrey, Huntington Bank, is requesting a drive-through ATM at the Myers location at Hall Road in Hayes. Is there a representative here? If you could come up. Get your name and address, please.
My name is Chris Humphrey, 4495 Millwater Drive, Palo, Ohio.
Okay. What's your state, what you're requesting beyond what I stated?
Okay. Thank you. Huntington wants to place a drive-up ATM in the parking lot of the Myers store. Of course, this ATM will complement and extend the services of the bank that's newly inside the Myers store. Their, the proposed location is, I think, best described on the southwest corner of the present Meyer parking lot with queuing for four cars. It's situated along the Green Strip there on the westerly side of the parking lot. It would be an ATM, it'd be an ATM on a concrete island. It would not be in any kind of an enclosure. It's what they call bunker-style ATM. It's the ATM alone, but it would have a protective canopy over the top of it with lighting and identification
Any kind of, any estimate as to how many visits you'll have per hour, per peak?
Well, it's hard to say how many visits per hour. The Huntington projects 3,500 cars a month. And if you divide that by 30 days, and, you know, it comes out, I think, to like 111 cars a day, spread out over 24 hours. You know, that's five cars an hour, but, you know, figuring only 12 hours, you're up to about around 10 cars an hour. Now, of course, that's just a projection. They have no way of knowing, you know, there's all kinds of factors, location, accessibility, you know, just the climate of the community as to how many people they'll really get. That number comes real close to the number that the traffic engineers use. If they open up their reference books, it comes out to like 137 a day. But, but actually, that's for an ATM that's attached to a bank. So that's best we can do.
Okay. Mr. Nguyen, and I know you're going to comment on this too, but let me get my two cents. I guess my concern somewhat is that, just with the entrance to Costco there, and because that light on Hall Road tends to feed traffic that's coming, sort of either direction, that maybe that's not the best location, or is that a concern? But I'm going to turn it over to you.
It is a concern. When I first saw this, you know, the Myers lots have all been split off now, and we have, except for the Tim Hortons, which we've approved, but hasn't been built yet, all the frontage on Hayes and Hall Road have been split off. And, you know, that area can be a little congested. And one of the concerns I had was, I'm not sure, I like it, but I'm not sure why I don't like it, in terms of a technical standpoint. So I had asked Brad Strater, who's one of our master plan consultants, who's a traffic expert, to take a look at this. And there was a page there where he has five specific suggestions for kind of addressing some of those concerns. And Carol Thirboro, engineer, had some comments too. So I'm, I think that design might need to be reworked a little bit to see if it can work better. The other issue was, was parking. They are removing some parking spaces, and we've gone through each time Myers came in with an outlot, recalculated everything. And I think the last time, when Myers came in for their expansion, we're like at the limit in terms of zoning purposes. So we may have to reevaluate, do they have sufficient parking based on the ordinance standards? So, you know, I want to give Huntington a chance to do some due diligence and see if we can make this work, but I have some reservations about it.
Okay. To the board, any questions for the petitioner? Okay, hearing none. Did you, did you share with the petitioner?
Yes, I did. And we had a chance to chat about it today, and I suggested I wasn't comfortable approving this yet. And we kind of agreed, maybe if it's, if the commission postpones this, that we would meet again tomorrow while he's still in town and go over some of these technical issues. So we've had a chance to talk about some of the details here.
Okay, very good. Is there a motion?
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Turner.
I move to postpone approval of the site plan for Huntington Bank, number 16-30, until a revised site plan is submitted addressing the parking and access concerns identified by the township engineer and planner.
Support.
Okay, moved by Turner, support by Appone. Got any questions on the motion?
Took the comment. Do you know how many locations you have around that area?
Around that area?
Within three miles.
Within three miles?
Seven.
Seven?
Seven. Plus you did-
Well, I don't have them. I wish I did. I'd be here tonight. I'd be on my yacht.
Plus Huntington just purchased First Merit Bank, and their ATM is less than a mile away.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay.
Okay. Call the roll. Commissioner Turner?
Yes.
Mr. Appone?
Yes.
Commissioner Wozniak?
Yes.
Mr. Dallo?
Yes.
Commissioner DeCicco?
Yes.
Mr. Bernardi?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Chair votes yes. Hopefully, we'll see you next month. Okay, next, we have a public hearing on a amended PUD. Here, would you read the notices published?
Charter Township of Shelby, notice of public hearing. Notice is hereby given that the Planning Commission for the Charter Township of Shelby, Macomb County, Michigan, has received a request for approval of a planned unit development consisting of 223 single-family residential units and 330 senior housing units. Applicant Edward Mancini, Legacy Land Holding LLC, 6850 19 Mile Road, Sterling Heights, Michigan, 48314. Proposed use: 223 single-family units, 330 senior housing units, Site Plan Number 16-32, POD-3. Location: Near the southwest corner of 25 Mile and Van Dyke. Sidwell Number 23-07-09-200-222. Legal description is as follows. Planning Commission will meet on Monday, September 26, 2016, at 7:00 PM in the Shelby Municipal Building, 52700 Van Dyke, Shelby Township, Michigan, 5867267243, for the purpose of holding a public hearing on the site condominium application. The application for the planned unit development may be examined at the Planning and Zoning Department in the Municipal Building, Monday through Friday, from 8:30 AM to 5:00 PM. Written comments may be submitted to the Planning Commission at the above address prior to the hearing. Oral comments will be heard during the public hearing. This notice is provided pursuant to the requirements of Michigan Public Act 110 of 2006 as amended. Shelby Township Planning Commission, Jerome Moffett, Chair, Raquel Moore, Secretary. This was published September 11, 2016. There were 162 property owners and three applicants were notified by first-class mail on September 9, 2016.
Great. Ms. Dennewith, did the publication meet all legal requirements?
Yes, it does.
Okay, great. Thank you. Our public hearing, the format for the hearing this evening will be as follows. The petitioner and/or representative will give their reasons stating for their request. Commissioners may then ask questions. I'll then open it up to the public to ask any questions or make any comments, and then allow the petitioner to answer whatever issues are raised at that time. I see the representative here. If I could get your name and address for the record, please.
Thank you, Mr. Moffett. My name is Jim Eppink. I am a land planner out of Clarkston, 9336 Ashmore Road, Clarkston, Michigan. And I'm representing tonight Edward Mancini and his development team on the approved PUD at 25 and Van Dyke. And we're here tonight asking for an amendment to that original PUD, which was approved back in 2007 and is currently under construction. Because the project is, has been going on for really about nine years since its original approval, I'll give a brief history of the project and where we are and where we'd like to go tonight, and then certainly answer any questions that either the commissioner or the community may have. We've, on the southwest corner of 25 and Van Dyke, it's a parcel, it's about 132 acres. The applicant has had it in his family for well over 30 or 35 years, and has spent an awful lot of time with the community, with the engineers, with our teams, and with the planning staff and the adjacent neighbors over the last dozen years or so, to really figure out what's right for this project. Of course, during that approval time, the economy has gone up and gone down. And in hindsight, that's probably given us a very good opportunity to continually tune the plan and come to with what, come back to what we think is exactly appropriate for the community and for this parcel. In 2007, the property was approved, the project was approved as a PUD with R8 and C2 underlying zoning. We had originally proposed and had approved a total density of 516 dwelling units. Seventy-nine of those are single-family, which are the single-family on the western property that's being, being built now. And then we had about 437 attached townhomes, anywhere from duplexes on up to 12plexes. So it was a combination of a lot of different, really nice townhomes that, back in 2007, seemed appropriate for the community and appropriate for the economy. We also had proposed and approved at that time a senior housing village that envisioned in that same, I guess it's the southeast corner of the property, if you will, along the high-power lines, a senior assisted living village, a number of outlots along 20, or along Van Dyke, and then retail along Van Dyke at 25. The bank was phase one of that, with some larger, perhaps, retail or office in the back with what we're calling phase two now. By way of history, the bank was approved back in 2007 and was built. The single-family residential along the western boundary was approved as phase one, and we've got about 18 homes under construction now, and that street is in. We had then moved back on to the retail, and this past winter, we were before-year commission and received final approval on the retail portion along Van Dyke, as well as about a 40,000-square-foot anchor to the back of that, which we had said even at that time, we're not going to build that. We're just going to come forward with the village retail along Van Dyke. Many of the community may remember about a year or two ago, we were here with kind of a radical proposal to get a Menards in. We heard loud and clear that that wasn't the right site, and frankly, tend to agree. And so, Mr. Mancini went back, and really, frankly, we're just seeing an awful lot of success with the single-family. Obviously, Shelby Township has terrific neighborhoods. Ours seems to be a great location, and, and we know that the single-family units, basically building more of what is going on immediately west, seems to be exactly the right idea for the neighborhood. So what we're doing tonight is we're requesting actually a reduction in density, pretty significant, a reduction of 233 units, actually, a reduction of 287 units, so that we can build 233 single-family homes. Seventy-nine of those single-family homes are already approved. So actually, what we're saying is, we'd like to reduce 283 multifamily homes and build an additional 144 single-family units. We're also proposing final approval of the senior village, which is really very similar to what was always intended. We always expected this to be a three-story building with a number of different levels of care within the building. Several years ago, we came back to the town and said, we really like this idea of assisted cottages or independent cottages. The idea of, if, you know, my, my mother or loved one went into the senior village, and my father, someone wanted to live close by, it would have that opportunity that you could actually have either a rental or a for-sale cottage unit that would be right on the campus of the assisted living. So we're showing 27 independent cottages, along with a total density of 304 rooms in the assisted living building. Be happy to talk about anything else. We've provided architecture for both the single-family as well as the senior landscape plans. A big part of this, and Fazel Khan's office has been tremendous to work with over the last half dozen years. There's a number of floodplain issues on the site, or formerly were. We've worked with the MDEQ, with the county, with the state. We've provided letters. So we've got all the water and hydrology issues worked out, re-engineered on the site. Everything's approved from that point of view, and we've provided documentation for that. Happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Are the elevations very similar to what you're building now?
Yes. The single-family homes would be of that same palette, same architectural design guidelines, which are part of the PUD, same thing that's going on there, same-sized home. So no, not looking to shift to larger homes or smaller homes, but, but really, what's been successful.
Okay. And the retirement cottages, are they duplexes?
They're duplexes. I think we have one single, and the rest are duplex. Well, I shouldn't say they're, they're attached duplexes, but if you look at the site plan, there are actually four units per grouping, because the duplexes are attached. So technically, I suppose they're four-unit buildings.
Okay. To the board, any questions on submission?
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Turner.
Not in a question as much as it is a comment. This is how we took a plan that was not a good fit for the township, and came up with something that I believe is a good fit, that offers some really good options as far as residential. In fact, the little, the retirement center you have in the southeast corner there is very similar to one I saw this summer in Idaho. We had, we had the, you had the independent living cottages and the independent living apartment building. And then you had the assisted living section and the skilled nursing section. And I can tell you, that worked real well together, from what I saw out there. So I think this really is a home run, from what I can see so far. So I applaud you for coming up with a plan that I think will, it's, it's very unusual when we have a developer come in and say, we want to reduce density and build more single-family homes. Usually, it's the other way around. So I want to thank you for that.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Turner.
Yeah. Any other comments?
Got you. I have a comment. I agree. I really like this amendment that you made based on the market changes. I think it's an excellent development. I'm supporting it 100 percent. Between the cottages and the single-family homes, like Mr. Turner mentioned, you know, bringing up the single-family homes and lowering the density on the multifamily, I think was an excellent move.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Just wanted to think that-
Could you introduce yourself?
Edward Mancini, and my address is 6850 19 Mile Road.
Thank you.
One of the things I'd like to point out is, working with Glenn, that some of these houses that we're building, we're asking for a little bit of reduction in the side setback. I think the standard's seven each side, and I think some of our houses, to get a third car in, we need to get to five each side. And I think Glenn said it shouldn't be a problem. I just want to make sure that's on the record, too.
Mr. Chairman? I think we addressed that previously, Mr. Mancini. When you came back, we acknowledged it. And I think when we do, we'll need a detail on the plan showing both of those options.
Okay.
But we, I appreciate you bringing it up, but we did approve that.
Okay, thank you.
All right, very good. This is the only public hearing the Planning Commission will hold on this special land use request. All remarks will be entered into the record for Township Board evaluation. We are a recommending body, and the Township Board will evaluate our recommendation, which is the legislative body. The Township Board will make the final decision on the special land use request. At this time, anyone from the audience is welcome to ask a question or offer their comment.
I'm here.
Yeah, you need to come up, give me your name and your address, and then sign in.
I just want to-
You need to, you need to come up to the microphone.
My name is Jimmy Shammel.
To the microphone, please.
Jimmy Shammel.
And your address, sir?
54150 Van Dyke.
Thank you.
Yeah, was, my question was, is one that they start building if it's approved and everything?
Okay.
When the project will start.
Mr. Chairman, I can answer part of it. If you're asking about the commercial, that's in permitted-
Not the commercial, no. I'm talking about the-
Residential?
Single-family.
They can answer that, right?
I'll, once we get all the questions, I'll have, I'll ask them all. So, no problem.
Can you please sign in?
Sir?
Sir.
Sir? Need you to sign in, please. Yep. Okay, did you want to come?
Bill Spitz, 8300 East Pearson. Question I got is, what size lots are we talking about for the residents, for the single homes?
Think they're roughly, what, 120 by 70?
Yes.
120 by 70?
Yep.
And I do commend you on going to single. That is a nice touch. I would like to see bigger lots, but that's okay.
Okay, yep. Does anyone else wish to comment? Go on once, go on twice. Okay, back to the board. Mr. Nguyen?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just want to point out, there's some minor discrepancies for the site plan in terms of dimensional discrepancies that aren't really a problem for, because it's a PUD. The parking for the senior complex, if we just use our calculations, they're short of parking. But, you know, this is a kind of unique use, and I think in our situation, we'd rely on their expertise and judgment, but we'd want some documentation to support their numbers, number one.
Okay.
The second one is, the cottage unit, the setbacks, we need to verify setbacks side to side. I think they're okay, but we need to, it's based on the height of the building, and I couldn't scale the height of the building. So we need that. The units that back up to the south property line are 25 feet from that line. The ordinance records 50 feet in multiple family. And the height of the senior building is 45 feet, 40s. Now, normally, we'd send them to the ZBA for an approval, but as part of the PUD, you can accept these. And given the scale of this project, those are very minor changes. And I have no objection from a design standpoint. The only design issue I had is, you have those lots that back up, 87 to 101, that back up to the phase two, which is that commercial flex space. That's not likely going to be residential, so we think establishing some screening along there now would probably be desirable. So whenever that is developed, with those houses going first, the screening's already there. It's probably a nice marketing feature, too. The other, the department comments are mostly, I would call, informational, street names, some, some items of that nature, that don't change any, in any way, the design. And if you look at our township engineers' comments, many of those are duplicates of mine, so we have some overlap. So my conclusion is, this is a very good project. I concur with everything the commission said, and our recommendation at staff levels for approval.
Okay, very good. The petitioner, Mr. Mancini, you probably know better than your planner. When do you start, plan to start billing?
Well, we would like to try to start the infrastructure for the rest of the development, you know, hopefully, either late this fall, winter, or maybe in the spring. And as far as the housing for the second phase, you know, as it absorbs, we'll just keep moving out.
Got you.
Yeah, yeah. It'll be based on absorption.
Okay. How about the, how about the senior complex?
The senior, the cottages, I'd like to probably be the first thing to go, is the senior cottages. And again, hopefully, we can do something next summer. And the building, probably late next summer. That's a little bit more of an animal to get our hands around.
Got you. Okay, all right, thank you. Okay, is there a motion to close the public hearing?
So move.
Support.
By DeCicco, support by Moore. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Our recommendation this evening must be based on the following standards: compatibility with adjacent land uses, consistent with and promote the intent and purpose of the special land use. Keep, capability, compatibility with the natural environment, this is the problem with, I forgot my glasses. Consistent with the capacities of public services and facilities affected by the proposed use, protect the public health, safety, and welfare, and the adequacy of public access to the site. We may recommend approval. Disapproval requests our table to evaluate further. At this point, I'll entertain-
Mr. Chair?
Mrs. Moore.
I recommend approval to the Township Board of Planned Unit Development Application Number 16-32, POD-3, for legacy village phases three and four, to permit the development of a mixed-use residential and commercial project based on the following findings. Number one, the final site plan is consistent with the original preliminary plan approved in 2006. Number two, the revised plan results in a significant decrease, decrease in the overall density of development at this time. Number three, the design provides appropriate land use relationships within the project into existing development in the vicinity. Number four, the project achieves the POD objective of encouraging innovative site and building design. Number five, the proposed development will not adversely impact any surrounding development. Number six, a revised site plan addressing all department comments must be submitted to the Planning and Zoning Department for final approval. And number seven, the proposed deviations from existing zoning ordinance standards are modest in scope and may be allowed as part of the POD approval process.
Support.
Okay, moved by Moore, support by Appone. Are there any questions on the motion? Hearing none. Commissioner Moore?
Yes.
Commissioner Appone?
Yes.
Mr. Wozniak?
Yes.
Mr. Turner?
Yes.
Mr. Dallo?
Yes.
Commissioner DeCicco?
Yes.
Commissioner Bernardi?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes. Good luck. Okay, next, we have an item under new business. A concept redevelopment of the Pottery Land, Pottery Land on Van Dyke. Mr. Nguyen, why don't you sort of tee this off?
Sure.
Since you put this on the agenda.
Recently, I had a meeting with a developer who was interested in redevelopment plan for that site at Van Dyke and East Pearson. And after meeting with Mr. Chalmers, and I shared some of my concerns, I suggested he reach out to the neighbors to talk to them, which we often do as well. And I think they've already had that meeting. And I also thought it might be useful to have Mr. Chalmers come to this meeting and just discuss this informally. And I get a chance to meet with people at the counter all the time, and I can share my comments, but I certainly can't speak on behalf of the commission. I wouldn't presume to do that. So since we had a little lighter agenda, I thought there might be some benefit in at least extending that discussion to the meeting and allow Mr. Chalmers to make that presentation directly to the commission. Just remind everybody that there's no action tonight. This is informational only. You know, we did, we want to make sure that everybody understands that, that whatever happens tonight is just for discussion purposes, and no application has been submitted. And after Mr. Chalmers is done, I'd like to offer some of my comments on the plan as well.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
All right. Mr. Chalmers?
Good evening. Thank you for your time. My name is Bill Chalmers. I'm a real estate developer, specialize in retail and commercial, and have been for 18 years. I currently sit on the Rochester Hills Zoning Board of Appeals. And as a matter of fact, 10, 11 years ago, I sat right there. I was on Shelby's Planning Commission from '05 to '06. So I've tried to develop. I tried to develop responsibly. And when the folks at Pottery Land decided that they had had enough after 60 years of moving pots around, they, they decided to sell. So once I heard about it, we were able to strike an agreement. And then the, then the question became, what is the highest and best use of this property? Our market research told us that it's probably not a pottery store. We did look at perhaps doing a larger than what we were proposing strip mall. There is still some merit in that. However, Taco Bell has stepped up with one of their new prototypes. This would be the second one in Michigan, and they would like to put one of their new prototype stores there. Mr. Turner made the comment earlier about reducing density. If, I believe that if the property was rezoned from C1 to C2, that would provide for about 12,000 square feet of retail. We are proposing a 2,000-square-foot building. The rezoning is needed. The use would be fine, it's just the rezoning would be needed from C1 to C2 for the drive-through only. And when we looked at it, we looked closer at it with the improvements to Van Dyke, with what's happening across the street with the Kroger, we felt that that might be an appropriate rezoning for you all to consider. In addition to the reduced density of what could possibly be built there, we would look at increasing the tax base threefold. We would actually look at increasing the jobs by threefold as well, from, actually, fivefold, from about 3 to 15. And what I personally like best is the green space. With the reduced density of the building, there's hardly any green space right now on that site, maybe a little bit of grass in the back. And we could add almost an entire acre of green space to that site, where none exists now. We would improve the access management, taking the curb cuts from three to two. I will note that access is an open issue right now with the county. The county is aware of the access needs of the parcel. That is currently an open- the access needs of the parcel. That is currently an open issue, and unfortunately, we can't speak any more concretely about access right now while the county is still conducting their And other than that, I'm available for any questions or comments. I'd really like to see how you all would feel about moving this through the process, how the planning commission would feel about actually rezoning this property from C1 to C2.
How's your conversation with the road commission going?
They want to, as you may be aware of what happened across the street, and then also what happened with the credit union, you know, they want to funnel traffic off of Van Dyke. I personally don't feel that that's, in with my experience as responsible development. They have their reasons. We have our reasons. I don't feel that traffic should be funneled through a neighborhood. So I could say right now that we're working through the process right now, and we haven't reached a resolution as I stand here right now tonight.
Okay, but acknowledging that what they say typically merits a little more authority than what your opinion is.
Yes, having said that, however, I will say that those curb cuts that are, that currently exist on Van Dyke were constructed by the very Department of Roads that are reviewing it today. We believe that their standard that they're applying applies to green properties. The site directly west of the subject site had no curb cuts at all, and the credit union site didn't have any curb cuts either. So we're relying on the position that...
Okay. All right, so again...
We feel it's a difference of opinion, and we're working through the county.
Okay, let me put it this way. This is a totally different discussion if there is a curb cut and there isn't a curb cut, as far as what I think is appropriate there.
Correct.
So that's, I guess, why I asked the question. To the commissioners, any questions or comments?
I just have a concern for the petitioner. Just, I know this is just preliminary at this point, but I just don't feel exiting, having an exit onto Pearson Road with the residents, I mean, the residential, it's, I just don't think it's a good fit. I like the concept, but I just don't think it's a good fit for the drive-through and the access onto a res, having, you know, it's a heavily residential area. There's children in that area. There's, you know, I just don't think it's a good fit. I think there's other areas along Van Dyke that would suffice.
Mm-hmm.
I'm all for a Taco Bell going in, you know, on the north end of Shelby, but I just don't think this is the spot. But that's just my opinion.
I see. Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
I true have issues with the, on Pearson, and each, Pearson being that's a residential area. I mean, Van Dyke is, I'm fine with that, but not the side street with the residential. The screening would have to be, you know, I worry about the screening for the residents behind them and to the south, that that's done correctly. Also, the lighting, that would have to be really, I mean, you have people right behind, live right behind there. And then, you know, we talk about hours, you know, Taco Bell, I know they stay open late, and that's another concern for the residents behind there with traffic at 1:00 a.m. So those are my issues that I'm seeing right now.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Turner?
Mr. Chalmers, I understand how times change, and I know a business has been around for 60 years, and I never thought they would be leaving, but times do change. A question I always ask when people come in for proposal is, it's currently zone C1. Can it be redeveloped, or can it be developed or redeveloped in this case as C1?
It could with a lot more space. Certainly, we could put up a, I could, we could, I think per code, that you could support a 10,000 to 12,000-square-foot strip mall without a drive-through. In exchange for the drive-through, that's why we're willing to reduce it to 2,000 square feet, not have a strip mall with a drive-through. And given the improvements that have been made to Van Dyke Avenue, it's one thought that perhaps it's time that, especially with the rezoning across the street, that perhaps a C2 zoning would be appropriate here. That's one school of thought.
One school of thought, yeah. I'm from a different school, but I do agree also that if we're going to have situations where we're having two exits onto East Pearson, that's going to create some very serious problems in my mind. One's bad enough, and it being that close to the residential home to the east. Pearson's had its share of issues over the years, and the last thing I want to do is try to create something else that could create a burden for the residents who are living there.
Completely understand. And I might add that when I met with the neighbors, I agree. I don't disagree with that position at all. There is currently a curb cut on Pearson. That's proposes to not change that. We would reduce the curb cuts off of Van Dyke from one to two. But frankly, it's, I mean, this is in the county's hand, and what I was hoping to do was to talk about, really, the use. Would you be supportive in order to have a development here that would reduce the density from, say, 10,000 to 12,000-square-foot strip mall to a 2,000-square-foot building with a drive-through? Is that something worth pursuing or not? I mean, if the answer's no, you know, then...
I think Mr. Bernardi raises a good point, is to remind us the hours of operation of a facility like this. And it's 2:00 in the morning, I mean, it's, they're long hours. And that portion, although there are other things that have developed around it, is the residential in nature. And to compare what's there now, you know, because there was a curb cut on Pearson, frankly, no one would probably ever use that, you know, to go. And I don't think there were a handful of people ever saw in that parking lot, let alone, and that's over a long period of time. I guess if you're looking, my answer right now would be, it would be hard for me to support this development in that location. And I, if anyone else wishes to comment.
Is, what if there is no curb cut on Pearson? I mean...
And a curb cut, or, you know, a responsible, better, but still difficult, because you're still going to have traffic in that location. You know, what are the hours of operation from Taco Bell? Are they going to close at 10, 11 o'clock?
Well, I'm sure that they have different hours wherever they locate. I mean, that's typically negotiated with towns.
Yeah. So, you know, there'd be a lot of ifs for this to, for you to put a lot of money into it, I should say.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Chalmers?
Mr. Chalmers, have you been approached by other retailers for this site?
We've had a very substantial marketing campaign, and this is the best we could come up with.
Could you put in 10,000 feet?
Would we fill up 10,000 feet? Yeah, but they'd be locals, and my history has been I deal with nationals. But certainly, the market, especially with what's happening with the Kroger and the fact that, you know, the Kroger spaces are getting filled, this is looked at as a, as definitely a secondary location to that. And there is enough pull with that Kroger, and the million square feet that will now be in that particular corridor with the Target and the Meyer absolutely get filled up. But if we could, I feel it would be filled up with not national-type tenants of, with whom I've done business throughout the years.
But you could put in four to eight tenants? Anywhere from four tenants, 2,500 square feet each, to eight tenants of 1,250?
Of mom and pop, yeah, certainly.
Yeah, mom and...
The market would support that, absolutely.
Okay. Thank you.
I personally, I don't feel that's the highest of best use. I think less density, more green space.
There'd be a lot of traffic.
All right. Anyone else wish to comment? All right, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Nguyen?
Nothing else on that site. You've covered all the planners' report. Yeah, one, there's one site, there's a marked-up site plan in front of you. This is the former Big Boy site of 21 and Hay, or 21 and Van Dyke. It's already been approved. During the engineering process, the county said they needed 10 more feet of right-of-way. That wasn't pointed out to us during the site plan process. So what that does is it kind of squeezed a little bit on the green space at the north and south end of the site. The first squeeze was a little bit too much. I suggested they squeeze it a little less. There's still opportunity for landscaping on the south end and the north end, and I think this is a reasonable compromise, because it came to us at the last minute. I wanted to at least share it with you before I talked to the Department of Roads. I was a little disappointed we got it at the last minute, but, you know, the county's going to, you know, they're going to, it's their call. But you're not going to compromise in terms of having some green space in front. And there was a concern with a neighbor who lives, you know, we've talked, we dealt with the neighbor's concern immediately to the west, but there's a, where the dumpster is, at that southwest corner, there's another neighbor back there that had some concerns. And we're going to wrap some landscaping around that little corner, so she's protected as well, and she was satisfied with that.
Okay, very good.
So we're trying to fine-tune this as best we can, and it's worth it. It really is.
At least they tore it down.
Yeah. Well, we're doing three out of three so far. That site torn down. The former illegal auto repair facility next to the Kinder, that, it's on the west side of Van Dyke, kind of across from where the library and the senior centers. That's gone. That was removed. The, then the Scotchy Party Store was removed this week, and we're working, we're real close to getting approval from Rite Aid to remove the building at Auburn and Ryan. That building...
Oh, yeah, good, oh.
Yeah, we've, that's, we're...
The whole, the whole...
No, that white, that white frame building, that, the confirmation I got today from Rite Aid is that they're talking two weeks. Now, that'd probably be a little longer, but they've hired a demo contractor. And, you know, the corporate structure approved the bids. And the last one, the old Monacatti Building, tomorrow's their deadline for responding to the building department's comments. So if they don't respond, we're ramping up the next enforcement effort.
Very good.
Making some progress, some good progress. We're not overbuilt, we're under-torn down. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay.
Motion adjourned.
Go ahead.
Are we, is it time for...
Time to adjourn.
We're going like the debate now.
All right, have fun. Is there support?
Support.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Is this from the floor?
From the floor, yeah.
We often don't have this, so it's, this is a new one. You have three minutes.
Beth Loran, 8268 East Pearson. I think it's very poetic justice that our developer decided just to walk right out the room and not listen to any of our concerns. First, Ms. Moore, Mr. Bernardi, Mr. Turner, thank you so much for your support. Oh, and I'm sorry, Mr. Wozniak, I'm sorry. The traffic that that would create, we do not have sidewalks. We have children that walk to the corner to get on the bus in the morning. The safety of our future residents, as well as those of us there now, should be first primary thought. Plus, again, as with, when Targets came before the board, and they never rezoned that residential property, and look at the monster you built, when are these developers going to get it through their heads? You buy a piece of property, in this case, C1, develop C1, period. And he says he doesn't want to work with locals? He should have been laughed out of this room by every one of you. Locals are our community, not big national conglomerates. The small strip that went in before Targets did, where the pizzeria's at, Bags &amp; Blings, Chinese Restaurant, now the Coney Island, would fit on that spot. They're consumer, resident-friendly, and normal hours, where you've not got people and drunk teenagers where they're targeting Eisenhower, coming in for a midnight snack at 2, 3, 4 o'clock. Some of these Taco Bells, Mr. Bernardi, are open at 4 o'clock still. And they're bringing in an urbanized floor plan? We're not urban. We are Shelby Township. We are the tree capital. Why do we need urban? And to correct him as well, it's not a little grass behind Pottery Land. It is full shrubs. The neighbors there do not see that mess that would be there if they'd leave the shrubs. Gary has made a big point of keeping Pottery Land nice. We've never had a problem with them. They don't live on our street, but they have always been part of us. And I'm sure, had I been blessed enough to have known his parents 60 years ago, that's why they built there, to be part of this community. Mom and pops rule the world. Leave it small. We don't need a national chain item in that corner. Please.
Ma'am, could you sign in, please?
Mr. Chairman? I don't mean to be rude or anything, since I'm just back on the commission, but do we have a three-minute time limit?
We do.
We do?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
I promise I won't take three minutes.
It's all right. That's why I didn't want to be rude.
That's... Good evening, Board of Commissioners. Janee Kowalski, 8225 Crawford. Yes, I live a street over from the proposed site of the Taco Bell. However, what happens in our neighborhood affects us all, and what happens on one street will happen on another street. And we do have some vacant property at the end of Crawford, and I can very well see something like this happening at the end of my street as well. A couple of points. When he said that potentially we could put a 10,000-square-foot building on this location, does it have to be a 10,000-square-foot strip mall? Could there be other possibilities that are C1-qualified for that location? And I really think that some different exploring could happen. And speaking with quite a few of the residents over the last few days, everybody is unanimous in about the entrance on and off of Pearson, that if they come before with a plan, that that would be absolutely unacceptable. And we applaud this committee for telling them and sending a very clear message tonight that residential neighborhood that's been there has been under attack in the past, you know, that we need to protect them. And at the end of the day, yes, you have to have a healthy balance of business and residents, but the residents live there. They breathe this. So I applaud you guys for that. The other point of concern was the residents that are directly behind that location, the severe impact, and I think Mr. Bernardi nailed it right on the head, is the lighting, the sound, the trash. I mean, the green belt that would have to go there. When I seen the site plan, it was 25 feet for the neighbors to the back, but it was 50 feet to the adjoining house that's there in the front. So it would just, and we always, we even suggested if they took that site plan and turned it 90 degrees, it would have been a much better site plan. So I thank you all.
Let's get the clock started. William Spitz, 8300 East Pearson. Two seconds, three seconds. I don't like the three-minute, Mr. Wozniak. I do not like that three-minute stuff. We went from 10 minutes when I first moved to this town, what, 19, 20, nope, how many years we've been married? 26 years. So 25 years ago, we moved here. We used to have 10 minutes to talk. Then it went down to five.
Now you got, now you got two, 250.
Now I'm getting three. Kind of, kind of just, just bad taste in my mouth. I understand some people can't come up every time for every little issue, but, you know, I understand that, too. But for some of us, you can give us a break, I would hope, maybe not. But I do commend all of you for the things you've addressed so far. Traffic flow for Pearson has been horrendous with the new development, all the new homes back there. With this township not mandating that they have to connect to Crawford to reduce the traffic flow we already have with all the new homes. Okay, that was a major issue. We didn't like. We have tons of traffic coming up and down. This would be horrendous with a drive-through and at night. So, thanks again.
Okay.
May I please sign in? Thank you.
Say it again?
Yeah.
All right, good.
Yeah.
You're...
Okay, that's fine.
Good evening. Good evening. My name is Mary Rumble. I live at 8522 East Pearson. We moved to Shelby Township six and a half years ago. We used to live in Warren, and we lived in tree-lined streets. And we looked for years, and we found a parcel of, at 24 and Hayes. And we've lived there for six and a half years. I have arthritis in both knees. We needed to leave a colonial home. We found a parcel on Pearson. It's 3.2 acres, unheard of in Shelby Township today. We purchased it, and we just built an absolutely beautiful home. We have people stopping by to comment on how beautiful our home is. I came home today with a flyer in my door stating they are building a Taco Bell on my corner. I am still in shock. We decided to stay in Shelby Township and to build a beautiful home. And you want to put a Taco Bell on my corner. I, I just don't even know what to say. All I guess I want to say is, please consider, this is residential. You are Shelby Township. You're supposed to be the trees, and all I see is parcels of land being taken down and the trees being taken away. I had my guts, said I should have moved further north. So I guess I just want to leave you with that. Please consider, when you do decide what to put there, of the neighbors. There's a lot of young families on that street. I heard there was already a dog hit by somebody's car coming out of that new sub that was put in. And there's small children. We don't need something like this in this neighborhood. Thank you.
Randy King, 56281 Cannon Creek Road. Live in Willow Creek subdivision. I live in Willow Creek subdivision, which is off of Pearson Street. Several points have already been made here regarding that. Biggest one I have is the noise and light pollution that's going to come from Taco Bell, especially because of their hours that they'd have there. The traffic situation, especially with Krogers coming in there, is going to get even worse on Van Dyke in this area. I realize whatever business ever goes into where Pottery Land was, they're probably going to look to have some kind of entrance onto Pearson Road. That could possibly happen, but I, what I would like to do is propose an alternative, modify Pearson Road at the entrance to Van Dyke, so there is a left turn lane there to make traffic easier. I don't know how any of the others would feel about that, but I realize something's most likely going to go there, whether we like it or not. Again, like I said, the Taco Bell, with their hours that they keep, the noise and light pollution, I know I wouldn't want to be one of the homes, you know, within four or five lots of there. I mean, it would be ridiculous. So, that's all I got to say.
Okay, thank you.
We've lived there a couple of years. I just want to agree with everybody else's concerns, the light, the noise, the traffic, the smell of the trash, the smell of the food, all of that. We've got a three-month-old little girl, there's five little kids across the street, there's a six-month-old little baby across the street, there's a three-year-old next door, there's an eight-month-old next door. That's just the five houses around me. All of our kids are going to be grown up, there's no sidewalks. Every day I go to work, I see kids walking on the asphalt to the bus stop. There, there just can't be a Taco Bell there. We would probably move. I'd just be like, you know what? No. So, that's it, just everybody's concerns, I agree with them, and I wanted to go on the record saying that.
Okay, thank you. If you could sign in. You know, just, this, this was sort of a pre-application meeting, too, so he hasn't even introduced, and I think, I would hope he, he sort of got a pretty strong message as to sort of where the board was, if he were to spend the time, more time and more money to develop this, so.
It would have been nice if he would have stuck around.
Yeah, I mean, it's, and again, if, you know, the, the, that, that first step is a public hearing if he were to, and so there would be that opportunity. I was led to believe that he met with the neighbors, and so-
A few.
A few, okay. All right, go ahead, sir.
Good evening. I'm Robert Hoffman, 8132 East Pearson. To put that in perspective, that was my truck you saw on the diagram of what's going next door. Okay? So, yes, we're part of the contingency of East Pearson and Crawford that have been in this room a number of times regarding what's going on, on the property between our two streets. Okay? And up to a couple of weeks ago, I thought that was the biggest of my concerns. Okay? Now, when we bought the house next door to Pottery Land, I was not worried about Pottery Land going anywheres. Been there forever, I anticipated it to be there forever. I realized that I bought a house next to a part of land that is commercial, okay? But I assure you, there's a large difference between what we have in the way of a neighbor between Pottery Land and what we will have with a Taco Bell. Okay? Pottery Land's been a great neighbor. Okay, they're quiet, it's a family-run business, they don't have late hours, their lighting is unobtrusive, okay? I have no qualms with Pottery Land. All right? But I see big changes coming. Okay? And those concern me. Excuse me. Well, let me just review the one point that he made, okay? I realize I'm David here, okay, standing before Goliath. There's a lot of people going to make a lot of money on this deal. Okay? I'm sure the Adams did very well selling their property, okay? I'm sure that Mr. Chalmers is going to do very well, and I'm fairly certain that Pepsi-Cola is going to do just fine, too, and the township's going to make out. But this is not a win-win-win-win, okay? There's a number of us who are going to lose, and number one is standing in front of you right now. Okay? I am not interested in taking a financial hit for the sake of a for-profit entity. The point of Mr. Chalmers, I want to particularly exception to, is he says that right now there are three jobs at Pottery Land will be placed by 15. Those three jobs support families. 15 part-time jobs at a Taco Bell are not going to be supportive of, of a family, okay? So, too bad he did not stick around, but that's either here or another. Thank you for your time.
Okay, thank you. Okay, is anyone else?
Hi, I'm Mark Rumble, 8522 East Pearson. My wife had just spoke a little bit ago. Again, we just recently, within the last year, purchased property on Pearson, tore down an old dilapidated house and built a new house. I worked with Mr. Winn, I worked with the Shelby Building Department to make sure everything was right, as this is someplace that we wanted to stay. I understand that with a commercial property on the corner, whoever buys it, they're short of free to, to build whatever they like. I, I don't like the idea of, of a possible egress onto Pearson. I understand what he said and what you guys have discussed here, that, that there's already a curb cut on Pearson, but quite honestly, in the time that we've been here, they only use that for taking deliveries out of their yard. Customers park on Van Dyke, customers leave on Van Dyke. I commend the, the members here who, who spoke out against the, the Pearson egress. And again, I understand that this isn't set in stone, and, and anything can still happen, but I would just like all of you to, to at least put yourself in our shoes and, and imagine the street you live on, would you want a Taco Bell with a exit, exiting onto your residential side street? I, I don't think anybody would want it, especially the gentleman that just spoke. Again, I, I, I understand that this is in the planning or just in the discussion, but again, we're just trying to plant the seed. My other question, I guess, would be, if anybody has an answer, is who would we talk to at the county to voice our displeasure with their considering the traffic on, on Pearson?
Can they communicate that through your office?
They can, if you want to send something to me directly, I'll forward it to the Macomb County Department of Roads, to the right people. So, you can just send me an email, I'm happy to pass that on.
Okay. All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
I think I'll do that anyway. I'll just communicate to the county tomorrow.
Right, and you've got a list of the names of the individuals that have expressed. So, what Mr. Winn will do is to everyone who signed in, and if you didn't speak and wanted, make sure you sign in, he'll send that list of the individuals that, that are opposed to that curb cut, so, or will at least express the sentiment this evening. Okay? All right, so, nothing's been submitted. He asked what our opinions were. I think you've got a pretty good sense as to what the opinion of, of this board, if you were to come forward, and hopefully that's the end of it. But that's not to say, and Mr. Turner made a good point, that it can be developed, you know, but with that, some of those concerns, I think, can be mitigated, the hours of operation, the type, the intensity of the use, the screening that's done. But you may need to be back here before to, to consider that, too, so. Okay, we can't deny, well, we can't deny someone's right to use their land. This person wanted to use it a way that was a little more aggressive than he was allowed, and that had been communicated to him. But that's not to say if he comes back with something complies, that with a C1 zoning, that he won't be able to build something that client, okay? No matter how many people yell and scream about it, too. Okay, all right, thank you. Now, unless there's anyone else, Mr. Dallow.
Motion to adjourn.
So he can go, so he can go cheer on Hillary. Support, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.